Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order when everyone's standing and joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, thank you, everybody, for allowing me to rearrange our schedule to have our discussion of the SRO on the front of the meeting. So just a reminder, after item D, when we have our school resource officer agreement, I'll turn the meeting over to Tammy to continue, and I will check out all your reports and data. I will watch the video, I promise, I will follow up, you can give me a test on it later, so I appreciate that, everybody, thank you. Okay, so first on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the November nineteenth regular meeting and public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on those? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Those are carried. Next, we have the minutes for the December fourth Board of Ed Special Meeting.
I'll second.
Motion second on that, any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. And next, we have the approval of the CSE CPSE recommendations.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. And next, we have our school resource officer agreement, just to, I'll get a motion on that first and a second, then we'll have discussion on that.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve contracting the school resource officer, I'll open that for a discussion. So I think, first, we'd like to set some background on it, just a little bit, to see where we've gotten, where we are right now to date with this, so. We had staff, and it wasn't the first time we've had parents, obviously, they approached us at our General Board Session, and asked us if we would consider the SRO position, the school resource officer position. I did reach out to everybody to make sure that everybody was comfortable moving that forward, just in the unofficial capacity. So then, we developed, I worked with Dr. McDonald and the sheriff to come up with a proposal, get an idea of what costs were. Dr. McDonald took it from there with the sheriff and ran through contracting processes to be able to get us to the point now where we can actually look at a valid contract with numbers. We did wait a month to be able to have this discussion, so everybody's had plenty of time to review and look at it, but I'll let you dive into some of the details with that.
Couple of the details that may not be clear on the contract implementation-wise, what's been explained to me is, given the fact that this position is not, it's an existing deputy, who will just be reassigned here. It is a new position that will be created on behalf of us if we pass a contract and move forward. Person would be hired by the county beginning of January, go through the required trainings, and be boots on the ground. Approximately, the estimate I was given was mid-February here in Mold, but the contract would begin in January. Again, it's a new individual that we would be building individuals' training and such for this position. We will be, if, if the board elects to approve it this evening, we will be working forward, we did have a meeting with the administrators and the sheriff to get an idea of how the position would work, let the administrators have any conversations and questions that they would like to have answered, and then to talk about implementation and process. So, we have not moved any further than that, because honestly, don't put a time until something's approved, and then we'll go into implementation process, communication process, and build the foundation and move forward.
And this contract is, would be valid from January first to June thirtieth, 2025. So that does allow us the time to go through our budgeting process with all the unknowns we have, obviously, with budgets every year. It does allow us to go past six months timeframe to work through and develop and learn what the new tool is capable of, what we, what change in a new tool, potentially task orders, things like that, that can be developed, because the next contract would be July first, and we'd follow it normal school year, so it'll be July first through June thirtieth in that timeframe. And I believe the dollars that are using, being used to fund this now are from unexpected revenue, from increased interest rates, some of the money we have in savings, as I understand, so that is where the budgetary piece is coming from. It's not in our existing budget, so it's in unassigned fund balances that we will be utilizing for that six months gap, and then we would fully expect to build out, with our finance committee and everybody else, and back to build out a full budget proposal with a position in it, and see where everything lies, and then go through our normal budget process with it, so.
The next step with that, if approved, would be a resolution to extend the size of the budget, because the expenses would need to be expanded, even though it's being, the revenue is from unanticipated revenue, it was still, the expense side of the budget needs to be expanded to assume this expense. So that would be next step. Did not bring it the same night purposely, because we wanted to make sure that we worked through this appropriately, unfortunately.
Okay, that's the background I'd open up for anyone for a discussion, I know that this has been on the forefront of everyone's minds. I, you know, I lived here in ninety-three, went through that whole entire process, and I was very thankful that we had two classmates that were heroes, in my opinion, to handle a threat that was inside the facilities. And looking back at that now, to think that that would still be tasked to a school individual, as far as a student or a staff, to me, is just a big hole in what we have. So, it's always been on the forefront of my mind to have some sort of safety internal to the buildings, and not just bricks and mortar type safety, but an actual person that's assigned to it. And I know it's near and dear to me, that's why we pursued it as far as we have, but I wanted to make sure that everybody has a chance to discuss this, so. If we want to go around, that's probably the best way to do it, Kevin.
One of the questions I had, though, was more probably clerical, is on the contract, when I was writing in the first page of it, like, just so you know, number two, there's a clause in there on how you can get out, one is a five day, and then the other one, it says fifteen days of written notice, but it's got thirty days in parentheses. Just clarification on what was the two of that contract. The other thing that I didn't see was anything on vehicle when it comes to the billing. There was no allotment for an automobile, so I'm assuming, so how's this SRO going to go from school to school?
They'll be using their own.
Their personal?
Yeah.
And then?
We, we did look into that, and I think the cost for another school district, for comparison, was like twelve thousand to have a car stationed permanently at the school, and we thought, starting process like this, that is just an expense that I didn't, I didn't think was relevant to us, and I didn't think it was needed, so just to be clear on that.
And then, the other question I had for you, on just, on the contract side of this, is, again, on the page two, four point two, just, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but just so that you could find it going through. It says that the sheriff can relocate the SRO in emergency status if need be, but when that happens, he's going to go into law enforcement field. Who's paying his salary at that point? Does that go back to Sheriff's Department, or is that part of the agreement that we're just going to pay for that? If it's an hour or two, I mean, I'm just, it's not clear in the language of how that's?
And I think in an emergency situation, it would have to fall back to the county, so we have to clarify that, if that is the case, I would, I would assume that's the case, but.
Okay, and last I have, I'll be honest, I've struggled with this, I've been on the fence, I've been back and forth on this, back and forth on it. I realize we're looking at using interest, that our business department has made good choices, we've made some money on it. But I don't know if it's a good idea to start something without having the funding stream to see it through. And right now, we have the funding stream to see it through June. So, I just, I got concerns more on the implementation of it that way. And a couple of years ago, not many of you were on the board, we indoor track come up, and one of the things we drew a line on that, we called our sports department to it, was mid-year budget changes, if there's something that comes up mid-year, push it to the final year. I'm also thinking we're in the middle of a superintendent search. We don't know who that superintendent is going to be, what their experience are, where their desires are going to be. I just think we've got a lot of eggs in the air right now, and I definitely implore a safe school. Honestly, I believe, I believe we have a safe school, you could always make things better, I won't argue that point at all. I feel that we do have a very safe school, and I would like to go through the budget process first, and see what the community, and that's another concern I had, was the community outcome, or lack of interest or lack of output. We did have one family come to the board, they're asked to come back with a letter of support. I don't believe we've had it, we've only had one other person comment against. Hearing from two voices when we're having such, it's going to have an impact on our budget. I just, honestly, for me, I would really wish this discussion was coming up in, after the budget, where we could have went through a full budget process with this, and seen what the taxpayers' actual take on it was, where their true opinion was, and then drew a line right in the budget, and made it part of our standing budget, and then decided we were going to fund this yearly going forward, or, or not, so. So, that's, I guess, in a nutshell, where I stand without getting too deep into the.
Thanks. Well, I see it as a, as a way to kind of have a dry run of what it's going to look like, what it's going to be, before we actually go into all of that, and really put the time and effort into the budget, and changing things, and moving things, and re-lacking funds, or what do we have to do to make it fit. We see for this next six months, we take that money and just kind of, just make sure that it works. We might not, after in the six months, we might say, you know what, really don't need it, it doesn't really benefit us, nobody seems to have that choice. I, I say, in the interest of the, the minds of the community from, you know, hearing what we heard when the situations happened, and seeing the chatter that happened, it was all based around the same thing. So we can say, look, we tried this, here it is, this is what it looks like, and then they'll see whether or not they really want to end up funding more of that, because then they'll see what it's going to look like without really coming out of their pocket just yet. That's why I think this six months is probably the best way to do it, instead of rearranging the budget first, and then having, because then we're stuck for a full year, and then it's coming out of the taxpayers, and the taxpayers can say, well, you're spending our money, but, you know, they might even vote it down and lose our budget because of that.
Well, like Kevin, I've been back and forth. Is, is there grant funding available? I mean, is that one, is there going to be, I mean, is that an area that we can look into, grant funding?
One of the things that Dr. McDonald proposed, I don't know what you were talking about, his proposal was actually tasking the grant writers that we had, that last set of grant writers, to go after this, go after this actively in this six-month timeframe. Because I think that everybody has to realize, from the governor down through, that funding for these things is extremely important. There's a lot of schools around us that do it in different manners, too, right? They hire private security, but everybody, a lot of the districts around us have this piece, and we just, we just don't right now. So I think the funding piece is definitely a critical thing, that no matter what we do, we have to stand on the gas on that and see what's out there, and task people that are aggressively good, grant writers, to go after that.
Especially being on the finance committee, and, you know, calling on us to?
I had that connection today, actually, communicated and had that connection today with the grant writers, and actually have asked them to search for additional grants in the mental health area, as well as safety, so we can continue to keep our foot in the gas in both of those areas, regardless of this outcome.
Because, I mean, you can use that money, the extra that we had, for, you know, some, you know, like, you know, another, somebody that, for mental health, you know what I mean, you can use it for that, too. But, and like I said, I've been, like Kevin, I've been back and forth, and, I mean, I guess, I don't want to say I can't hurt to try it, but as long as right now, as long as we're looking at something to fund it, so we don't have to, you know, tax everybody else to, you know, to do this, then, that'd be my, that would be pretty much my concern, especially being on the finance committee, is that, you know, we got to find a way to do this without making things worse for everybody. You were next.
Okay, I would say, I have similar thoughts to you guys. After careful consideration, I would say I'm probably a no vote, unless at this point, unless I hear something else that convinces me, but just to kind of run through my thoughts, you know, we've had, I've had a chance to look at some of the research on SROs, the benefits. Obviously, research has shown that they can deter some forms of violence, so they're definitely important safety considerations for schools. I think that's something that we should continue to be considered going forward. However, some of the recent research from University of Albany shows that they do not prevent gun-related incidents, and also, SROs are linked to harsher disciplinary practices, including increased suspension, expulsions, and police referrals and arrests. So that is something that I think we should be considering, that what they're saying is that what would be a typical disciplinary measure in a school can sometimes be bumped to the police, then you have this, you know, police-to-prison pipeline that can be created for some, for some students. Additionally, the University of Wisconsin suggests that there's no strong evidence that SROs universally improve school safety outcomes, and they actually recommend that investing money in evidence-based strategies for school safety. I think another big part of this for me is understanding the district need. So far, I don't feel like I've seen the data that suggests that we have any, that doesn't mean that there isn't, right? But I think that we should go through the processes of, for example, the climate survey. You know, look, look at those opportunities, the surveys, the community budget survey, to get feedback from the community and see if there's an actual need for this in our district. If there's concerns with violence, then I think that, you know, this is definitely something that we should consider. Specifically, when it comes to the cost concerns, for me, the potential cost for a six-month period is fifty-six thousand dollars, for one year, we're looking at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. If we don't have another permanent funding source, that would be approximately a pointy percent increase, or one point five percent increase in tax, taxes for the community, respectively. There is federal funding that's available out there, so I think that is something that we should pursue first as a measure, instead of immediately going to, to our community as a potential tax increase. I am concerned that with this proposal, we'd be spending district money that could be used to support more preventive measures, like SEO, social workers, and enhanced building security. In addition, what we're talking about here is that the funds to cover this would come from our unreserved fund balance. And I recently attended one of the NISMA webinars on school budgets and long-term planning, and the board director for ASBO specifically mentioned something that kind of captured my attention. He said, "The districts need to be very careful about using funds that are not reoccurring revenue," which is what we're proposing to do here. Fund balance is not reoccurring revenue. And if there's no new revenue streams coming into the district, then we're setting ourselves up for a difficult fiscal situation in the future, which is what I fear here, that we're setting ourselves up that in the future, we're going to have to cut positions that may be of higher value than the SRO. In addition, the costs in the district continue to increase, while our revenue increases, while our revenue sources are lagging. We have potential significant increase in healthcare costs for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, as well as major unknowns with our major source of revenue, which is our foundation aid. The recent Rockefeller Institute Foundation Aid Report recommends a phase removal of safe harmless over five years, and also recommends that districts with fund balance in excess of four percent use those funds to fill gaps in foundation aid funding, or as property tax relief, which is our situation currently. In other words, we may be in a position of few years when we have to give back four percent or five percent to the community, or to use it to fill gaps in the foundation aid. So I guess, given those considerations, I would not support the proposal as put forward tonight, but I would encourage us to look at it through the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development process, similar to what Kevin proposed. I think that we're going to get more information through the stakeholders, through the community surveys, we'll have a better understanding of our state funding position, and we'll just be, be in a better position to make an informed decision. If we, if the board does decide to move it forward tonight, then I would recommend that we make sure that it's clearly stated that it is a six-month trial period, so that the community doesn't just think that this is something that just is going to roll over to the next year, and that we put in clear evaluation measures, so that the district can evaluate the success or the failure of the program, so that we can make decisions about how we're going to implement it for the following year, or if we're not going to implement it for the following year. And again, continuing to look for outside funding sources, I think that's really key. Ultimately, we don't have the revenue coming into this district, so we need to find that additional source of revenue that can fund a SRO position.
Okay, so I guess it's hard for me to not think about this sort of emotionally. I mean, I myself spend all day in a K-12 building, my wife and my kids do the same. My father's a bus driver here, my mom is a college professor. So just on a personal level, yeah, I know we all have ties, we all have family in school, but it's my entire family. So I guess for me, it's hard to think about this non-emotionally. And to me, it seems like, you know, heavens forbid, there's an emergency, like we had a scare in September. It seems like a hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year is pretty cheap if it, if it stops or prevents a threat. And of course, we're never going to know if it prevents a threat necessarily. But, you know, that being considered, you know, emotionally, I would say, yes, we need to try it. You know, trying to, trying to think non-emotionally, logically, I guess. It is, it is a lot of money if there is not a threat, right? But I think this is a unique situation where we can try it for remainder of the school year. I guess my, my concerns financially are sort of, you know, summed up, at least it's not, this isn't a three-year contract, this isn't a five-year contract. We can try this out the rest of this school year, if it's valuable. I don't know how we look our, our taxpayers in the eye and say, we're not listening to your concerns that we had back in September, October. I think it's worth trying, and, and yeah, we build it into the budget, so there's more secure funding, but, you know, considering we can, we can fund this this year with quote-unquote "extra funds," I mean, I, I hear you, Kevin, that we shouldn't use those willy-nilly necessarily. But, like I said, I guess it's just, it's hard for me to think about this subjectively, I guess, or objectively. But I, I think it's worth trying. I think it's, like I said, I think it's worth, at least for this year. That being said, I don't, I, I wouldn't want the SRO to be disciplinarian, but that seems pretty explicit in the contract here that that's not their role, right? Because I wouldn't want that either, I think that's a big concern. And there, too, I wouldn't want to see teacher positions cut to fund this necessarily, you know what I mean, but we're not talking that. At least, not now, right? I mean, we, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at six-month position here, if we can build it in the budget. Yeah, I wouldn't want to see current staff being cut necessarily, but if we can find a grant, or we can find another funding stream, I think this gives us some time to try it out, see if the taxpayers do support it, us continuing it, and in that meantime, hopefully find another revenue stream for it.
Wow, everyone said a lot, I don't have much left to say. I've gone back and forth a little bit on this myself, similar to Nate, it's hard for me not to think about this. I mean, I'm a finance person, that's what I do for a living, so it's hard for me not to think of this more on the emotional side. I don't have children in the school district anymore, but I know when I did, there were instances that occurred that made me concerned. I mean, I know that there have been physical altercations in the school district. To me, and maybe I'm totally out of bounds, but to me, this would add a level of support to the administrators and to our social workers that they may not necessarily have right now. Not necessarily to act as a disciplinarian and drag people off to jail, but maybe as more of a discussion, because I'm sure that there have been discussions of instances we've had in the, you know, in the recent past, where we've had to, you know, consult law enforcement about certain situations, and to me, this is a, an opportunity to build relationships, and also to give a level of security when our students come through those doors. I mean, we did have parents come, and I've been, since I've been on the board, we have not had very many people come and give presentations to us. So the fact that we had two people come and discuss what happened to us in September, I'm sure there are more people out there that have similar opinions, but just didn't have the courage to come here and talk to us. So I think based on that, and the fact that we do have the funds available in short-term, six months, like Nate said, we're not signing a three-year, five-year contract here, we can revisit this. And I think it's worth a try and see how things go, and, I mean, my own little consideration would be if we could have some type of input from our administrators, from our school community, at the end of this, so we know how they're feeling about, about having this person in our buildings. Maybe, maybe it's going to be a positive experience, I don't know, I don't work at the school, so I would just like to have that type of input when we, when we get to the end of this in June, or when we're going through the budgeting process, so that I, you know, can have an informed, make a more informed decision on that.
Okay, again, I, I do like the timing of the contract, because we're already going to be through a budget cycle before we have to make that decision on a, on a contract. I guess we'll be through that whole process, which is good. I think the easiest thing is we'll probably all vote, that way, if we are split, we have it all down the center. All started, I guess, yea?
Mr. Charles?
Nay.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yea.
Mr. Davies?
Yea.
Mr. Huma?
Yea.
Mrs. Tiddy?
Yea.
And Mr. Burew?
No.
Okay, that is passed. I do want to note that we have homework to do with this now that it is passed. I do want to make sure that the contract stuff is addressed, and that we do everything we can to secure funding long-term for this position, and go forward with everyone's concerns. I'd like to, at the end of this, I know this is an exception from what we, what we normally do, so at the end of this, I want to make sure everybody's concerns are met, and we have a positive going forward. So, you know, that's my challenge to all of us, is us, us do our best to make this long-term, make this sustainable, get the feedback we need, and make it a very positive experience. With that, I am going to run to Bainbridge, Mr. Huma corrected me, I'm going to amble to my truck and go to Bainbridge for a varsity basketball game, so I appreciate you guys letting me reorganize this, and I will turn the meeting over to our vice president, Tammy Tweedy. the meeting over to our vice president, Tammy Tweedy.
Drive carefully.
Just one follow-up to this again, what I'm hearing is two pieces of information flow. One, regarding this implementation and the adjustments as we go forward. Two, full implementation and even ongoing. And then two, grant finding. Okay, so I'll keep that flow coming in both areas, what I hear in, as I had said before, with the board, I'm like, you know, the school mental health grant, the 1.2 million dollar grant was denied, but there was an error in the rating, and Senator Gillibrand's office has taken up the advocacy on that for us. So fingers crossed, maybe there's some way that that's going to get reversed. So we're in a waiting pattern there.
Moving on, public comment. Anybody here for public comments? Is anyone here for public comment? I mean, help the student, students who have that. So if we have anybody here for public comment. Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public at board meetings. Please note that neither the board nor administration may engage in a dialogue or respond to questions concerning personnel or student matters. This is not an attempt to restrict public comment, but is done to protect the privacy of individuals above and required by law as a matter of courtesy to others in attendance. Comments of individual groups should be limited to less than three minutes. So then we all, then the next is we have...
Wait, Chris, this is right? You're it.
You're it, you're our public comment. You can come on if you would like.
After that conversation, I don't really know if I want to bring it up right now. Do I have to have it?
You don't have to, but feel free, we don't bite. Very friendly.
Yeah, that was an intense conversation, so I was like, I was, I was impressed for that one. So we have been, I have met a couple times with Adam, I've talked to a couple of members of the community, and I am one of the heads of the Long Booster Club Cheerleading Program. I know that we implemented the cheerleading program for basketball, that they have that through Downsville, had by Nicole Stanton. We had a handful of girls who are now aging out of our booster club from the Townsend School, and they don't have the opportunity to move up to modified, nor do they have the opportunity to do like a JV and/or varsity type of thing. I come from a larger school district in Connecticut. I'm a, from a class of 259 kids, so, and our community is very large, I had competitive cheerleading, I was an all-star cheerleading, I coached, and I did it in college. It's basically in my blood, I've done it 29 years. And then I met my husband, I had moved up here, I had children, and my goal is if I had a daughter, and this was, and he can attest to this, if I had a daughter, I was going to get the cheerleading back here. And I did. For the booster club level, because she's five. And my goal is to see it come back into the high school. My proposal to Adam, when I had spoken to him and to Zach, was to kind of piggyback it to the football program. It would be a very low cost, there would probably be very minimal funding needed for it. If possible, whatever allowance through the finance department or anything like that, fundraiser that's allowed, if it's not purely monetary, you can go through any type of like Decker advertising, anything like that. I've been through the wringer of a bunch of fundraising techniques, and I've been pretty successful. But I would obviously need to go through you guys because it's a different ballgame, since it's not a nonprofit situation, technically more just tax exempt. So my proposal is to piggyback it to the football program. Have these girls kind of get out of trouble who don't want to play a contact sport. Not every girl wants to play soccer, not every girl wants to play field hockey, not every girl wants to play basketball and/or. I was very adamant when I spoke to Adam, I spoke to Zach, I don't want to step on any toes with Nicole and her basketball program in the future. If it does blossom into something larger, basketball season would be more for competitive cheerleading side of things. They would use those games and/or that season for practices to get ready for competitions. And that's not where I want to go at the moment. I just want our football players to have kids to cheer them on. I want to bring more success to your concession stands. I want to bring more people in your stands. I want to get the crowd pepped up, have pep rallies, run a homecoming parade. When I first moved here nine years ago, the homecoming parade was huge. I walked in and I was like, wow, this makes me think of Ansonia High School, the whole entire town looked like Halloween because you guys are black and orange. And then it dissipated. And that made me sad, because now we only have balloons on the bridge, and we have a very minimal thing. At the end, it would be nice to see at the end of the homecoming game, a huge pep rally before the game, but that can't be done unless you have people to do it, right? So my proposal is to help spearhead and introduce this program just as a test run. I'm not asking to go and buy uniforms and POMs. I would donate from Empire Metalworks t-shirts for the girls, have all, buy the bows out of my own pocket, and have them stand on the sidelines and root for their football players. They don't have to all be girls, that probably wasn't the best thing to say, so sorry, they all have to be girls, but any child who has that in their dream. And on top of that, I have multiple certifications in stunting and safety. I am recertifying myself to become a coach for the New York State, for high school cheerleading, and I also have a mandated certification that I need to have for tumbling-wise, because I am the tumbling instructor in soon-to-be limitless all-star cheerleading program at Catsfield, Ansonia. So all of those things, it's, I just think that it would be a very positive outlet for kids who just don't have anything to, you know, do during that time and aged out of the program, and it's just something that I feel personally passionate about, and I'm willing to put everything I have into it if allowed. And that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the board's knowledge, that is on our budget development information as consideration.
And you have some values?
For future values, potential future costs, various things, Mr. Hoover is the one that has.
Next, we have a new faculty introduction, so...
Okay, our last one, who's not able to be here the first time around, Sarah Nagy-Fleishman is here as her mentor, I'll let you introduce.
Sure.
I'm not agreeing with the name, I'm just letting you do it.
And I know most of you, if you don't know me, I'm Sarah Fleishman, I'm a school psychologist, most of the middle school, high school. And I'd like to introduce Ryan McChesney. She is a school psychologist intern, and she is working at Townsend Elementary School. A little background, you did your University of Buffalo undergrad work there and continued with graduate work. And literally this year, she finished, she's going to finish up those internship hours, and in May, she will be able to get certified as a school psychologist, and I have to say, wonderful addition to our district, really nice strength, an optimal learner, and, I mean, good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to Walton.
She initiated that, she like reached out in the spring and was like, you know, hey, I'm, I need an internship placement, really great initiative, I mean, not just then, but even now, like just getting things done, a hard worker, all positive things, we want to keep her. Besides, so, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You can feel free to...
You can, you can leave, you don't have to hang out.
You might as well, but yeah.
Wrong, wrong. Not that. Is that wrong? No, someone has to say it.
Okay, now we're on to discussion items. So the first up is the Policy Committee, met on November 25th. We have a report on that.
Okay, so the, the meeting notes are, they're linked there in board docs. So we had a good meeting, we went through the committee charter, we went through, did a final review of the charter, then the, the final version of that is actually on the agenda tonight for approval. We've just made a few additional minor revisions to that during the meeting. We talked about who the committee liaison would be, and my name was suggested, and I accepted that role, so again, I think that's up for vote tonight. We also talked about moving this forward as a template to the other committees, so Mike, Cory, myself were planning to get together to develop a template that can just be handed to the other committees so that they can work on completing those committee charters for the rest of this year. And we also talked about the process for reviewing that committee charter annually as part of the policy committee would likely be done in August, and at that time, the committee liaison will also be selected, because each year you're going to potentially have new people on the committee, so you have to reevaluate the roles. We reviewed a few policies as part of the NISMA Policy Services update. Nothing really major, I would say, there was one that's on the agenda tonight for our first reading. We talked about the investment policy that is a work in progress, Mike and Mag are continuing to work on that, and we'll have a draft of that in an upcoming meeting. We talked about the policy review plan, so currently, we have eighty priority policies that we're reviewing at eleven of our regular business meetings, they come as, you know, the regular policy review. There's a hundred and one additional policies right now that Cory identified that we could review in eight additional business meetings. So the plan is that basically over a two-year period, we will get through approximately 200 policies, so every meeting that we're going to have as part of that policy review, we see those links to the policies, and that's our opportunity to go through and review those policies. At the same time, what we're going to implement is that the management team will be informed of any new policies or any of those policy reviews so that any changes at the management level can be brought to the board's attention, and we can work to implement any changes if necessary, because we discussed that as a, as a board, we don't necessarily know what's going on at the management level that maybe a policy needs to be changed. And...
So to stay with that, Kevin, what you just mentioned, what we'll do, the concept will be that the administrative supervisors are advised at every board meeting, they need to look at those review policies as well, and if any of them are applicable to their area, they need to review it and then submit any comments or concerns to Cory so that we can inform the board that we have an administrative supervision concern or comment regarding that policy. So it's, it's going to be a little more active work on their part currently, unless we take it to them for an adjustment. Homecoming is an adjustment, they're not actively reviewing, but they're going, it's going to have to be a team effort and an active review as it goes forward.
And I, and I think we discussed that it's a lot of additional effort, right, for the board level to be reviewing all those policies, so hopefully their review will help trigger some of the discussion, maybe some of the updates that are actually necessary that we may not have time to get in the weeds on, so. And then just a few additional items, we talked about just DASA reporting in general, potential for AI, AI policy in the future, and then, oh, the board, the building use, Buildings and Grounds policy, we discussed bringing that back to the table. Basically restarting discussions, this was a policy before my time, but I guess, Kevin, you were involved in some of those discussions, that we were moving down that path of having a policy, but just hit a roadblock with an ARCAN issue, and so we're looking to bring that up and move that forward. I think that was it.
The only thing I would add is one of the things when you look at the template, we've added into the template, and just reflected that the committee would have the say at the committee level, so like we had administrators or guests we've invited in as part of that committee, permanent stakeholders would say, at the committee level, they'd have an equal voice, because you can't necessarily just have your board members making recommendations on the committee level at that level. So you'd be giving them the voice at the committee level, if they had to come and vote to make something move forward or back. And then obviously, when it came to be adopted and implemented, then it would come back to the table for the boards. But just, that was a fairly good conversational piece, just how to make that work out that you're productive with these things. If you want a, I'd recommend to everybody in the future, next year, reorg, if you want a music committee that you don't have to do a lot of reading, you try to give, this is a perfect committee. It's pretty laid back.
I'm not buying it.
Yeah, well, it's just, it's like, so, it's, but no, it's, it's good, but there's been a lot of activity there for a couple of years now.
Yes, yes.
The Curriculum Committee, we met last night, so Kevin, Burew, Nate, and myself, and we already had Melanie and Dr. McCall. I'll go over just some high-level notes, and then I'll, then the three principles, we'll talk about the assessments from 23, 24 after I...
Just the hyperlink doesn't take you directly to the committee, so if you want to go to the committee, if you haven't already, go to the library, and then down to the Curriculum Committee, and you bring up the agenda online. All right?
So just some high-level things that we discussed. We reviewed the summer program, so I just wanted to express our appreciation to the Walton teachers for signing up to give up a portion of their summer to support our students at the high school, middle school, and elementary level, just to ensure that our students continue to have success. I know I appreciate that. Not all schools are lucky enough to have teachers that care about our stu, their students like we do, and I really do appreciate the fact that they, that they did come in on the summer to help our students, so. As you all know, our high school program is primarily for credit recovery, so this is to address those students that have not passed a class, and so this is just to make up and make sure that they are not falling behind. So we, that is a six-week program. We had 27 students with a 93% attendance rate, and the classes that we offered this summer were English 10, English 11, Global 2, Algebra, Earth Science, and Biology. And then at the middle school, so the students come in and work with a mentor to develop essential skills, so the students that are part of this program are students that have not passed two core classes, so those are the students that we target for that area. Elementary is we have students come in that to avoid basically the summer slide to continue to build on their skills. So we had 40 students participate in that for K through third grade. Then in addition to those programs, we also have the Crush Connects, which is a program for meeting social, emotional needs for a select group of students. It's a four-week program, so, and we had just over 50 students between sixth and 10th grade, and so they focus on altering views to violence, therapeutic art, affirmation, respect, and communication, and then they also go on some field trips. So I think that's a really nice program to help meet the needs of those students, and we've been doing that for three or four different summers.
Yeah, since the big charge of COVID.
So. We talked about our graduation rate for 2024, which was 87.5%, and then we, if you look at the library, we have the historical look at our graduation rates, I think it's from 2010 to 2024. There's an enrollment that we have for the 2024, 2025 school year. There's an enrollment that we have for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year within the library. That's showing eight hundred and six students this year. And then also, Dr. McDonald discussed some data behind. We asked previously for reasons why people are leaving the district. Some of them include just dropouts, homeschooling, going to schools inside New York State, going to schools outside of New York State. So if you're interested in data, that's really interesting, I think.
Those are on your board data links document, all of those items.
For the spring meeting, we will talk about textbooks, but right now, the high school departments of math and social studies are reviewing textbooks. And they will bring what their needs are in the spring to us and then also that will be presented to the entire board. And then for elementary, the math and ELA, it's just updating the versions that we have currently. It's not new curriculum, but it's just updated to what we currently use. Is there anything you would like to add?
The performance measures, is that?
Sure.
Are they talking about that or?
No, that's, that's us.
Oh, okay.
There's kind of about three, eight regions.
So those are part of the stronger connections grant, right?
Well, correct, but do you want me to take it?
Yeah, go ahead, be better.
The, the performance measures, if you recall, part of the strategic planning, we built that. Our initial goals were linked to the stronger connections grants, our data goals. And we wanted to have a quantifiable goal associated. And I, and I mentioned and alluded to, if, if anybody recalls, that thankfully, it's positive, our math proficiency rates, we set a target for this year of twenty-five of thirty-three percent and three-five. And we came in at thirty-four last year, twenty-four. So that target obviously needs to be increased to be another target. So, and the same thing with sense eight, we had a target of thirty-three, we came in at thirty-eight. So what we're looking at doing is just increasing it by five. So go from thirty-four to thirty-nine, building off of what they, what the actual achievement was. So it's actually a six-point target increase. And then go from a target of thirty-three to a target of forty-three because we had a target of thirty-eight. So that's nice, we go a ten-point jump where we thought, hopefully. So I want to bring this forward to the committee and to the board and then I'll update our strategic plan document. So we update on the board what these performance measures are. Okay? Turn it down now?
Yep, I can talk about the assessments.
Now, whether you want to start, you want to start three, eight, or regions, whatever order you want to start.
Yep, so in your document, you'll have the three through eight math test scores. The first slide there just shows you how it's broken down by color. So all the level ones are red, level two is yellow, level three is green and level four is blue. So as you go through the slides, the first slide is grade three math. On the top is the breakdown by color for our level one, two, three and four. And on the bottom shows how many students percentage-wise was proficient with a level three or a four. And if you look at that, our third grade in comparison with our region is right in line, right in the middle of the pack. So our math scores, as Dr. McDonald was saying, are doing pretty well. Our kids are growing and looking good. So next slide there goes right to grade four. Very similar situation where fourth grade is very comparable to the region, doing very well. If you want me to go more in-depth if I can, just stop me. Next, we have grade five, same situation there. So our math is looking really good in three, five and then through six.
So our, one of the things that's, that's a positive, of course, before we get into the numbers, is in the middle school, we've increased participation that we get with, with the state test. There were years where we had grade levels where we were right around twenty percent or even lower as far as the percentage of kids actually taking the test. So before COVID hit, we were in that trajectory of getting more kids to take it. COVID hit and then we had a couple of years where getting the kids to school and back in routine was our, our focus. In the last, the last two years, and this will be going on the third year, we've really focused on getting the kids to take the test. So any kind of data we get, whether it's a comparison to the rest of the region or just in-house type things we're looking at, is actually data we can use for something based on, on enough kids as opposed to fifteen, twenty kids taking it when, you know, you've got sixty-five, seventy kids in the grade. So you can see as the kids go up from sixth, seventh to eighth, our best, our best results were at the eighth grade level. Which is a, a little bit surprising just because ten to twelve of our kids take algebra in any given year typically and don't take the, the test because they're taking a region. So this is based on, if you take away the kids that we think are probably the top ten, twelve kids in the grade in math, aren't even taking this test and our numbers are still good. You know, we've, we will and have already taken a lot of these results and looked at our, where's the areas where we're needing to improve. We're seeing a difference now with the curriculum change in the elementary school and we've adapted the same curriculum in the middle school. And, you know, we're seeing positive things from that and I anticipate we'll see them in test results as we move forward. So the, the next one is the eighth grade science, so they changed that. Last year is the first year of the, the new method. So there used to be two parts to the eighth grade science tests. There used to be a multiple choice or written tests or computer-based tests as they are now. There used to be a hands-on portion. So the state has changed it. They haven't eliminated the hands-on activities, but now they're just spread out over grades six, seven and eight. So there's four labs, required labs, in addition to other labs where science teachers do with the kids. But there's four that they're required to do. I have to sign off and science teachers sign off on the fact that our, by the time they get from six, seven, eight, by the time they take this test, they've done those four labs. And then we don't have the, you know, usually it would take us a day and a half of changing our schedule, go through and get all the hands-on stuff, which was valuable, but I don't know if hassle is the right word, it really messed with things when we were trying to do that. Now that's eliminated, it's just the, the written testing part. So we don't have much to go with, seeing this is the first time that they did it this way. But as we move forward, we'll be able to take this information and figure out the areas we're strong in, the areas we're not, all that kind of stuff. Something that, that we probably should have mentioned before we got into this is right now, this will be the third year in the middle school where both our math and English and now science has been computer-based testing. So that's a little bit of a, a learning curve also. Not as much in the ELA, you can read and answer questions, whether it's on paper or on a screen in a similar manner. Big difference is the math. Big difference being able to write something on a sheet of paper and put it on computers. We're shifting to get more and more of our grade levels having the touchscreen, which is going to, has helped. But we're not at a hundred percent right now with that stuff, so. So that's something that's a little extra added element that, that our teachers are left to deal with. I'm not just teaching math now, I'm also teaching how to work all the little buttons and tabs and everything on a computer screen. Helps as far as grading because now we don't have to have our own staff take days off out of the classroom to go through and grade testing. So it's double-edged, you know, it's good and bad, I guess. That one. Go ahead.
Okay, so now we're ELA. Our ELA scores are a little bit lower than our math. We were a little surprised to see the dip a little. We are a little lower than the region. So we are looking into, you know, how are we implementing the training that we've been giving teachers as far as the letters one and two? Which is part of the Science of Reading Initiative from New York State and how to teach kids how to read. So that goes for grade three and grade four. Our fifth grade is a little different, their scores are at the region and maybe just a little bit above, so we're looking good in fifth.
For the ELA in the middle school, again, we've increased the number of kids taking it, which is huge. We typically get more taking ELA because that's the first state test they do. Without looking at the numbers, we're over ninety percent the last, last three years with our ELA as far as that. And a couple of times, our seventh grade actually had a hundred percent participation, which is something that we've never had before. Usually you get a few kids here or there, either absent, just don't make it up when they get back or just choose not to. Our, kind of the highlight of the middle school as far as our, our scoring is our, our eighth grade English, which is you know, really right on pace, higher, higher scoring than the region, right on pace with the whole central, central region, which is, is nice to see. We got a ways to go in a lot of these areas, but we're making progress and, you know, at the middle school level, we're finally getting enough kids to take it to actually have data that's usable as opposed to, all right, who took it, who didn't take it.
Before we go to high school regions, just want to draw your attention to the New York State Assessment Core Tracking Document. We reviewed this last night and I realized I don't think I have this link on the data link sheet, and I should, if you would invite them to have it there. What this does, so you, you just heard the comparison with the region, but what this looks like, looks at is cohort to cohort. What happened from last year to this year with the same group of kids. Did they are they consistent, did they drop, did they grow? So as you look at this chart, you look at the color code from left to right, the first chart, ELA and math, you will see the, how they performed in twenty-three and how they performed in twenty-four. And then the other ones, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And you will see majority of those areas are consistent or have some growth. The second chart, when you look at it, you can look at it from left to right, twenty-three to twenty-four. And what I like to look at there is, is there a shift? Level one, level two, the low score, level three, level four. And twenty-three did that same group, the same color. How did they do in comparison to twenty-four? Did we have a shift? So within those ranges, scores, level one, if we have, we're not moving much on the three angle of our scoring. But if we take a look at, for threes and fours, we take a look at ones and twos, you have less ones and more twos. Less ones and twos and more threes and fours, you're seeing a positive shift in the positive growth of your kids. So we have, we had significant gaps, everybody did learning gaps coming out of COVID. We had some instructional gaps, we changed our new curriculum. Are we seeing a growth in movement? And you'll look at some of these and all of these, you see minimal movement at least, consistent minimal movement. Or you're seeing pretty good movement, so that's positive. I always look to see, are there areas we have to look at, dig deeper out of concern, or are we seeing a positive? And the next one, you look at the performance, that first one's ELA, second one's math. And then as, as Mr. Hoover alluded to, the last chart, we start tracking the student participation because that was a goal. Last year, I believe, or two years ago, the strategic planning. So we started doing a tracking on this and there's your results so far of your tracking of your student participation. Okay? And I'll add this to the data sheet, so you have it right at your fingertips. Okay, any questions on the three, eight? Let's see, venue. Okay, regions?
So for the region scores, you have the same similar, or the similar side-by-side comparison of Walton versus the region. It's broken down the same way, your score in the regions gives you a level one, two, three, four, five, represented by the different colors there. And then each slide that you see is a different region's exam. The first one that you had is geometry. And because we are a semester, a semester school and have a full region's exam session in January, we have for our kids. A full region's exam session in June, what's represented here is only the June scores on the graph. If you see next to our, the graph that represents Walton, I kind of did some shorthand notes of what our combined percentages are for that content area of Walton. That gives you a better idea of where we sit when you look at the rest of the schools that are compared their entire school year, who only take the regions in June. So to start with geometry, I've broken it up across these slides between levels one and two and then levels three, four and five. You see that sixty-eight percent of our students were at the bottom end. If you remember, in January, we did not have a great showing at the January Geometry Regents. But with some targeted PD, we did get those results going in the right direction. As you can see, at the bottom there, our overall passing percentage is thirty-two. So we did make a big jump in January, it was eleven, so that is starting to go in the right direction. That's an area we're going to continue to monitor and make sure that that is improving. Algebra two, you see that there's no shorthand on the side just because it's a, that's a region's exam that we only offer once. Because it's not a course that we can consistently offer for the enrollment purposes. This is an upper level math. You can see that we have fifty percent of our students at level four, that's tied for first amongst the schools that had this region's last school year. Earth science, this is more of a closer to a fifty-fifty split. Fifty-four percent of our students are at a level three, four and five. The other forty-six percent were level ones and twos. We did have an overall passing percentage of sixty percent. This is a, a regions that freshmen have to get through with their transition into high school. So this is one of the most challenging regions we do have. So sixty percent passing, I do see that as a positive. Living environment, we, this is where we start to get into some of our better performing regions exams. Seventy percent of our students were at a level three, four and five and our overall passing rate was even one. Chemistry, this is back to more of a split. Fifty-two percent were at levels three, four and five. If you look at the bottom set of chart, it does look like we are closer in towards the middle or bottom. This is an area we'll continue to monitor and see where we go. We don't know if this is just a call where the kids was the test, we're not sure, but we're just going to continue to monitor that. Physics was also an exam that we only offered once, because of course we don't get a lot of enrollment in. This is an upper level science. You see that we didn't have, the sample size here for students is pretty small. And I actually, I don't even think I wrote in what our results were in, in January last year. So that was an error, I might have not catching that on the slide. English, consistently year in and year out, this is one of our best performing regions exams. We have an overall passing percentage of ninety-four with seventy percent, seventy-six percent of our kids at the upper level of three, four and five. Level two was also one of our better performing regions examined last year. Ninety-one percent overall passing, eighty-eight percent of our students were at level three, four and five, with thirty percent of them at a level of five. So kudos to that, Mr. Metzger, for those students that are.
More than kudos, that's tremendous.
U.S. history shows similar results, ninety-four percent overall passing rate. With eighty-nine percent of our students at level three, four and five, only eleven percent were down in that one or two range. You can't ask for much more better results than our social studies department did right there, along with ELA and some of the other pieces that I talked about. You know, we've got some areas to improve on, but overall, I'm very happy with the results from our staff and our students.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you. Facilities Committee meeting, the December third meeting was canceled and the reschedule is Tuesday, January seventh at five P.M. Finance Committee meeting will be Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at five. And then Legislative Advocacy, the annual legislative breakfast is scheduled for Saturday, February first. Correspondents?
We do not.
Additions to the agenda?
No, no new items, however, I would like to bring to the board's attention that we did add an additional request for unpaid leave that we were expecting from Dennis Spicer and that is already in the consent agenda item. That is item seven eight.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything there we would like to discuss? If not, I'll enter the table.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
One thing I would point out is the, just to make sure everybody saw the, um, interest rate summary is in there now. It's part of the, that's gonna be part of the regular reporting.
In the financials.
Yeah, in the financials, yeah, which is good.
As you request, I believe, from the Finance Committee?
Yeah, yeah.
That was in, just look at every book, page twenty-five to thirty-seven, in case anybody is interested.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Not? New business. Accept donations, so we have, we'd like to accept these donations with our appreciation. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars from Lions International Walton Club for a student to attend the HOBY Leadership Conference. Two hundred and fifty dollars from Lions International Walton Club to the ADP program. Two hundred dollars from Jen and Black, Jacqueline Reether to the Walton Athletic Department in memory of Joan Copula. A hundred and fifty dollar total cash donations from parents of the class of twenty-twenty-five to the class of twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Not? Please indicate by saying, indicating, saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Next is Authorization for Project Management Pre-Referendum, Referendum Services Proposal from CNS Companies. Capital project. Dr. Rick Battle, do you have any?
Well, um, those are the items C that will come up next, uh, as the architect, they are, uh, these are typical things that happen in development. And so we approve the contract pre-referendum and then the money is allocated on the capital project, so. You, you have to have them develop in order to get it, and of course, if, I guess if you didn't have the project approved, then the district will fund it. But if the project gets approved, then they get funded through the capital project, so it just gets reallocated.
I'll entertain a motion on eight B, Authorization of Project Management Pre-Referendum Services Proposal.
I'll move it. A second.
Any further discussion, questions? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then eight C is Authorized Architectural and Engineering Services Proposal. Entertained a motion?
Should move it, second.
Any further discussion? Not? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, all right, personnel appointments, so Kristen McGraw, teacher eight. Like to entertain a motion?
All right. Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? All right, old business. So this was, um, authorized for the Scuba Skara's relocation flood mitigation grant funding from our November nineteenth meeting, so I'll entertain a motion on that.
To move it, one second.
Any further discussion? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carrie? Now policy review. So we have the A to Review of Board Policies. Kevin or Kevin, you want to read them? Because I'm not lucky enough to be on the Policy Committee, I don't want to take away your work.
Yeah. So Policies for Review, four, three, two, one, dot one, three, preschool, special education. Four, three, two, one, dot one, four, special education personnel. Five, four, zero, five, student wellness, and six, two, four, zero, investments.
And then Policy for First Reading?
Do you want me to say it?
Again.
Policy, one, one, two, zero, School District Records is being put forth as a first reading tonight. I'll make a motion on that.
Perfect. All right, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one is moved for our first reading. All right. Approval of the Committee Charter. So I'll entertain a motion on that.
Move it. Second.
Is there any discussion, questions? All right, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Phew, now we're down to supervisor remarks, didn't think we'd ever get there, people.
So we've got the three supervisors this evening, um, typically when the administrators are here, we have their reports, but with one meeting these next two months, we're making the administrators come to both, but just two weeks ago, they did their report. So we're gonna have a break this evening, um, of course, we just let them make a report out on their assessment, so. The supervisors here, we've got, uh, John Brett and Rick's. Just a, a couple of highlights, um, you know, John, on John's, we have the new radios installed, that was a, what's that? And they work great? Okay, terrific. Nice, we were actually having issues, uh, uh, consistent issues, but where the buses couldn't, the base and the buses right in the Townsend parking lot couldn't hear each other. Let alone out on, on a hilltop or whatever, we had a bus yesterday get, get, uh, slightly stuck on Fair Hollow on ice. They couldn't communicate, John had to drive out there and assess it and help them, get situated, get in the way. Um, there's no issue, we just got on the ice a bit. Uh, that's, that's been taken care of through the system as well as a new tower, so, uh, much a wider range. It's gonna help with our safety without a doubt.
And that's a Motorola frequency, right?
The Motorola, I believe so, take around Motorola's, aren't all your radios Motorola's? You don't know. If Rick was here, we'd, we'd know, because he, he does.
We haven't gotten the new ones yet.
The radio, so, um, on Brett's, uh, the gym floors were done, they held off until Thanksgiving to get through the fall. Uh, especially, they were, uh, behind getting school ready to go, which is not an uncommon thing in the summer. Uh, especially, you know, if you have personnel missing or anything, so they held off on those, got them done. We did move back to, uh, an oil-based, new oil-based, we had moved to a water-based. I don't know if anybody remembered, but we had some slippage issues last year that, that, uh, Mr. Hoover and, and, uh, Mr. Wood had to, we had to address that with additional cleanings to keep it so it wasn't slippery. To the point where our kids didn't want to play here, they wanted to play it down somewhere, so I was like, I can't, but we need to have our floors so that they're proper. So we moved back to oil, it seems great, looks great, um, there's some pictures on there, and I, I should ask, I haven't heard anything.
No, I didn't see anybody slipping in games out there.
Very good.
No news is good news.
Absolutely.
Well, sometimes. Surprise news is never good news. Mr. Robinson, uh, been doing a lot of training with the technicians, uh, a little bit just here this evening. And, uh, did a server update on, on UPS's on the twenty-seventh, um, with BT Voces here, so everything's going well there. Okay, so that's just three, um, just a couple of quick things from me. If you notice underneath my remarks, I have a document that is the solar feasibility study. Uh, we had a meeting this morning with a company that did a feasibility study with the cost. It's an actual solar company out of Buffalo area, and, uh, it was excellent. The document out there has the details that we felt we were missing from our last feasibility, our last conversation. I think you'll be, be happy to see the chart. We're going to schedule them to commit into a full presentation, similar to that, but expanded to the board, um, probably for February. Uh, targeting that area, and, uh, I, I think you'll be, I think you'd be very impressed with the knowledge and the, where I learned more in the, at the meeting today I have from everything conversations I've had regarding solar. So, um, that's there for your review, I also added it to the Facility Committee's, um, library as well. And just last thing, just a reminder, this is concert season, uh, this week, next week, so we have, I believe, elementary tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah, six o'clock.
Good school Thursday.
And high school. Yeah, one of the days, you know, whatever, which day, which, next Thursday, next Thursday. So if you're interested, um, those will be going on, and I believe, uh, our set chorus is, is in the variety show again? Right, because I saw that documentation?
Yes, yep.
They were last week.
Oh, that was last weekend, so they were.
They were excellent, it was a great show.
Yeah, wonderful.
They were doing, yeah.
So everything's in full swing, uh, we have our, what's the Santa visit?
Uh, that's next week or whatever, which day that is.
So yes, we still have Santa visit here at Walton Central School, and we will continue to have Santa at least until June and then whatever happens, but Santa will be, I mean, the kids get awful excited.
I think it's Friday, actually, next week, the last day, last day.
Yeah, so, so you're just.
It's also accessory day.
You pick on dick again? That's, that's all I get.
Do we need an executive session?
Not for myself, yes.
Uh, Townsend, is there gonna be an open house before the holidays, or is that?
Probably not at this point, they have not gotten the tiles, uh, rectified, um, and I don't have an update as to when, and I'm being a stickler with those walls, I do not want to pull those walls down and then have them do tile work in the hallway. With as sensitive as our, as our staff has been, uh, with dust, so we're keeping the walls up and hopefully we get the tile switched out, and I'm being stubborn. They're spec to have certain tiles down, they did the whole one-half of the same tiles, and they're not going, they better find the same tiles. Or they could replace them all, we'll move the wall back up, but they gotta match, that's what was their contract, that's itemized, and, uh, they had some options, and I said, I'm not gonna discuss them, so go find them, so that's where we're at.
They're misordering their calculations, not necessarily our issue.
They, exactly, they had enough there, and then when they went to install them, they didn't have enough. Uh, not my problem, uh, go find them. So if they pick that select and, and rare of a color, shame on them, right? So, uh, but we're that close, and we're not going to, we're not gonna settle to, to not have something that looks just gorgeous up there.
At this point, it'll be after the holiday season.
More than likely, unless Ethan tells me something get, got done this week as a surprise, but right now, we haven't heard any update. He hasn't heard anything update back that they found the tiles, you haven't heard anything? So, we'll see what happens, but, but we're gonna, we're gonna maintain those, those, those walls, um, and, and again, there everything inside those walls, there's no activity, everything has been professionally cleaned, it's just the walls are there so that when we do do the work, we do have a little bit more dust created by doing that tile work, picking some up, replacing them, um, it'll be contained. But it's ready to go right now, it tries to be created, it's gotta be, it's gotta be tried.
Ready for them to, yeah.
You know, uh, and it's not easy, if, if you know, if you think about Townsend, it's right in the middle of the hallway, the upstairs hallway. So you got the fifth graders over here, and you get to the fifth grade, so, so you go upstairs, you go upstairs here, then you go back downstairs, all the way down the hallway, then go back up. Because you got that spot in the middle that's, that's cut off, so it's not convenient, um, the teachers are very ready for this to be concluded, um, but.
You haven't put a window in the end of each hall, have you?
No, but I, I would like to so that they can see there's nothing going on in there and everything is good, um, but we'll maintain it out of an abundance of caution. It's no, no reason to get anybody, uh, worried or unfairly, uh, agitated from any type of, of dust or anything, or just anxiety.
Was the, uh, s- solar study, were they gonna do anything with facilities or just straight with the board?
Well, we figured we'd come to the full board, um, they will, if we want to do it separate, but since the whole board is gonna hear it, we're becoming straight to the whole board.
That works.
But we can, of course, it's there, we can have a discussion in January about the report, um, uh, without them as well, so there's some options there, you know, definitely.
All them flat services that I don't like, they've turned blue, but still, it's, it's good, it's just colorblind, I'm not a fan of flat services.
Yeah.
Not one of them above your head?
Nope, but, uh, if you notice on this facility study, they did the calculation on what the, uh, per watt savings would be, which we did not have in the last one, which is, uh, if calculated today, if I remember correctly, is ten cents. So for every kilowatt, every ten cent savings, and approximately, um, if we were to put in Townsend and Middle High now with what they have spec there, uh, we would be looking at approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in additional savings per year, so. And there's two different, there's NYSERDA and federal funding that offsets it, and then you've got three options. You can do capital project, you can do EPC, uh, which is electricity performance, or you can do the PPO, which we already heard about, which we're not famous. So there's the other two options, uh, thinking this could be part of a, of a project, it could be a stand-alone project, um, lots of options.
This one, do they, have they done any local schools?
Not, they're from the Buffalo area, um, they actually came through, because, you know, even if you're not at NISBA or any of those, the vendors will send you an email and say, hey, thanks for stopping by the booth. They sent that email and I went, uh, I wasn't there, but you, you interest me. So I, I emailed back and then we went down the road, and, and they're, they're very impressive, uh, very impressive, so, uh, it's, it's nice to have some information, as we said, it's learning stages for us, so this is good learning. Any other questions? Okay.
Executive session?
Not for me.
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to adjourn? All right, good. Me neither, thank you.
Thank you, folks.